Can I bang the guest? I'd like to call the meeting of the regular board meeting of the Work County Board of Education for April 25th, 2023. If you'll stand, we will have Mr. Best retire to lead us in prayer and Ms. Karen Etheridge to lead us in the pledge.
Will you bow with me, please? Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come once again to your throne of mercy. We come tonight acknowledging you as our God and our creator. Lord, we come tonight asking for your wisdom in all the decisions that we make as a board. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute the pla- pla- the flag and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the item number four, approve agenda superintendent. Do we have a change?
Yes, we need to move executive session if we could, 19 to 21D if possible.
All right.
And that'd be the only change. We got to quit follow-up.
Yeah. Okay, do I have motion that we approve the agenda as meant, as outlined by superintendent? Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Dees made the motion, Mr. Ganis seconded. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, agenda is approved. All right, next thing is a public comment. Mr. Ellis, if you'll come up. I have something to read before you start.
Yes, sir.
All right, this is public participation slash comment at school board meetings. The Work County Board of Education welcomes and encourages citizens to be involved and attend its meeting. As a part of its general operating procedure, the board offers an opportunity for Work County residents, businesses, organizations, or school system employees to address the board at its regular monthly meeting. The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public pursuant to the guidelines outlined in policy BCBI and not for immediate response by the board to the public comment presented. To be placed on the agenda, individuals who request to appear before the board must notify the superintendent's office in writing by completing the public participation request form and submit it at least 24 hours prior to the regular monthly meeting of the board. Request must clearly state the topic or issue to be addressed. Each person whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make comments. Where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the group should designate a spokesman. The board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive to individual board members or board employees. The board will take comments under and questions under advisement until there has been time for the superintendent to look into this matter. Okay, Mr. Ellis?
Yes, sir. All right, good evening, board members. Again, I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak on behalf of Colonial Life. Again, my name is Earl Ellis. Pretty much went to school here, born and raised here. I was looking at Mr. Tyre, I see him all the time, so Mr. Tyre should give yourself a pat on the back. You did good with me and, yeah, that's right. Just to let you know, them times where I had my head down on this, I was really paying attention. I focused better with my eyes closed. But I do want to speak on behalf of Colonial Life. This is some benefits that we do offer to the staff that's employed through Work County School District, which came about back in 2012. 2018, I believe, the rep that once monitored the benefits for Work County School actually took a different position in Alabama. So from 18 all the way through 2020, the benefits that were in place that were grandfathered in did not have an agent to pretty much watch over these benefits. So I went through all the proper channels to be that agent for Work County School System and they elected me to be the agent. And we didn't change any of the benefits because he was already grandfathered in. And that's why I'm here today because I know a bid for proposal went out for a new broker coming in to offer benefits for Work County School System. But when I came in, my benefits were pretty much separate from what's already offered. So that's why I'm here tonight, just to make sure that we can continue to keep those benefits separate from any proposal that's about to come on aboard with the school system. But if you look real quick, and I'm gonna make this brief so I can sit down and get out your hair, pretty much if you flip with me to the third page where it kind of gives an introduction as far as all the voluntary benefits, you would see one plan that we offer is the cancel policy and right below you see it's a hospitendemony. And if you're flipping, you'll see where it says cancel insurance level three benefits on the very next page. This is a policy that we offered with school system back in 2020. And the reason why we offer cancel policy because that's what we seeing nowadays. Cancer is pretty much on the rise. Me and Ms. McCarthy had a small conversation before the meeting got started, just kind of talk about the things that's going on that we seeing, not only just the school system, just in the world in general. But what this policy does, it helps employees out with a lot of medical costs because at the end of the day, whether you've got the best health insurance on the planet, you will have deductibles, you will have copays, you will have out-of-pockets. So the money that these employees are receiving back off these different benefits is going towards that cost. Again, it pays money to the employee to kind of offset any kind of major cost. It gives them upfront money just for being diagnosed with cancer. On the back end, it pays money to them for all types of treatment, whether it's chemo, whether it's radiation, whether it's surgeries. So whatever it takes to treat that cancer, that's what this policy is for. If you flip to the next page, you'll see another policy that we offer, which is called a group supplemental limited benefit. This policy actually goes hand in hand with their medical insurance, regardless if an employee has medical insurance with the school system or with a spouse outside of school. But again, it's something that's set in place to counter target deductibles, copays, and things like that. But the beauty of these policies, that there's no health questions and all pre-existing conditions away from day one, so it does not matter if employee had health issues. Him or her spouse or dependent child will be covered upon these policies. At the end of the day, when they use these policies, whether it's going to the hospital, whether it's to treat cancer, whether it's surgeries or things like that, they will get reimbursements back to counterhead offset medical costs. But again, the reason why I'm here is to make sure that we can keep these benefits pretty much grandfathered in as they already are. Again, being that I'm from Waycross, born and raised, I have several employees either I went to school with or either they parents or the students that I actually they teaching right now that have these benefits. So it's really something good that's being offered and again, I just want to make sure they're grounded or pretty much stay in place. But if you flip with me to the last page, you will see what's called a claims report. This is something that I, once a year, I sit down with superintendent Burt, I sit down with Leach, and I sit down with Janice, and I kind of go over a claims report. They kind of show you what these policies are giving back to the employees that have these policies. It didn't pull a report for 2020, but when I met back in 2020, we know everything was kind of haywire with COVID and all, but we paid out back to the employees that have these policies roughly $80,000. And you see in the middle portion where it says 2021, 22, and 23, the middle part shows total payments. So we can see each year, these policies are paying back roughly over $100,000 back to these employees to counterhead offset major medical costs. So that just proves that these policies, these plans are working. And then too, another thing I want to mention too, if these policies were to be replaced, it's gonna be hard because we have several employees throughout the school system that have diagnosed with cancer or things that's going on. So if we replace these policies with new policies, these employees would not be covered. So we want to make sure that we keep these employees covered what's already in place and not remove these policies. So that just kind of brought concern to me that I just want to address to the board, make sure that these policies will continue to be grandfathered in with the school system and I will still continue to be that representative, represent Colonial in anything as far as claims and things like that will go through me and not through the upcoming broker through the school system. And that's all I want to speak on.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, presentations?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have Dr. Johnson from Daffodil, and she's going to present the Golden Achievement Awards for people.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mister Derek Cobb, Daffodil Schools Resource Officer, is magnificent. He is always willing to help at the school in any way he can. Officer Cobb patrols and keeps Daffodil safe with a smile on his face. All of the students and parents love being greeted by Officer Cobb. Officer Cobb speaks kind and encouraging words to all who enters Daffodil pre-k. He participates in morning and afternoon duty without being asked. Officer Cobb stays busy at all times by monitoring the building, lifting heavy materials, and participating in fun school activities. He enjoys his Daffodil family and his little friends. He cannot wait into meal times to help them with their trays. Officer Cobb reminds the students of the rules, walk and feed, quiet voices and bodies still. Officer Derek Cobb is a proud member of the safety team. He keeps us all on point by ensuring visitors are checked in and out of the front office, doors are locked, and the staff members' contingent badges are worn properly and not being pushed by mistake. We are happy to have Officer Cobb as our school resource officer. Congratulations. It gives me great pleasure to present Mister Derek Cobb the Certified Golden Achievement Award. Ms. Tammy Boyet is an amazing school counselor. We have truly been blessed and fortunate to have such a kind and wonderful counselor this year. Ms. Tammy Boyet is Daffodil's first school counselor. We are so proud to have her as a part of our Daffodil family. She communicates well with our parents and community stakeholders to ensure the students' academic, social, and emotional needs are met. She has a love and passion for working with the students, staff, and parents. She enjoys her job. Ms. Boyet provides community resources, parent meetings, and workshops to help parents and students with everyday living essentials. She visits all classrooms to teach the students social and emotional skills such as sharing, friendship, and safety. She is the school's chairperson of the school's parent environment committee. She leads the committee by being the liaison. She contacts the appropriate business leaders to ensure parents and students are receiving the appropriate materials to aid them at school and at home. She is an active member of the safety team and the cybersecurity team. Ms. Boyet has an awesome can-do attitude. Congratulations. It is an honor to present to Ms. Tammy Boyet the Certified Golden Achievement Award.
Okay, thank you to all those who are Golden Achievement Award.
Thank y'all.
Recipients today. All right, Superintendent, court items?
Yes, recommend for approval payroll and disbursements as of March 31st, $5,696,133.34. Financial report was given last night by Ms. Chaney. Enrollment report as of April 18th was 5,969 students. Last year's number was 6,038. Calendar date's coming up. Last day of school is May 19th. Graduation is May 20th at 9:00 a.m. at the stadium. Post-planning is May 22th through 24th. Of course, more of the holiday is May 29th. Pretty much it.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion, Ms. Waters second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. Item number eight, approved minutes of the meetings, and that was for March 13th, March 14th, and March 27th was a call meeting. If you had a chance to look at those, do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Etheridge made the motion and Mr. Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, Mr. Superintendent, number nine?
Yes, recommend for approval, request for four non-resident students to attend Work County Elementary Schools.
Or you heard the recommendation, Superintendent? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Nelson made the motion, Mr. Dees seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, number 10?
Recommend for approval, request entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Work County Parks and Recreation to use property for recreational sports programs serving school-aged children in Work County.
You heard the recommendation from Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Ganis made the motion, Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 11?
Yes, recommend for approval, memorandum of agreement with Coastal Pines. The purpose of the agreement is to provide instruction and practice for Coastal Pines Technical College students at the Work County Board of Education. The agreement provides for the facility to accept students for clinical experiences in the student's field of study.
Okay, heard the recommendation from Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion, Ms. Excuse me, Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, number 12?
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from the director of CTA to apply for the FY24 Economic Development Partnership, EDP designation. The purpose of the designation is to recognize school districts, understand the role CTA plays in economic development through partnerships with business and industry and pathway alignment to the needs of their local regional workforce. Granted the EDP status, our CTA program will qualify for grant funds that can be used to develop a summer externship program for teachers, provide economic development training for staff, and also engage in industry tours for students and educators.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, Superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Waters made the motion. Mr. Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, number 13?
Yes, recommend for approval, request to seek funding in sub-items A through G as presented.
All right, heard the recommendation of Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion, Mr. Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number 14?
Yes, recommend for approval, bid submitted by National Security Group for 2324 school student and football insurance coverage. And you see the cost there.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion, Mr. Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, number 15?
Yes, recommend for approval, request from director of special projects to purchase the Inspect Plus and DNA software at a cost not to exceed $25,115. The funding source is SLOST. These programs are previously associated with illuminated education, our local testing solution, but are now administered through Renaissance Learning, its parent company.
Heard the recommendation, Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion, Ms. Waters made, did the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, number 16?
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from director of facilities to extend the current contracts for another year for lawn care services as follows. Bidants and Sons at Center and Williams High, Oakville, Nookville Lawn at Ruskin Central Office and Harold Center, Hills Lawn Service, Adap Dibley Moore Drive, Wearsburg, and Lake Home.
All right, heard the recommendation from Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion, Mr. Ganis seconded. All in, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Mr. Superintendent, number 17?
Recommend for approval, the review and results from the Executive Committee's completion of the Georgia School Board's governance assessment.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Dees made the motion, Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, number 18?
Yes, recommend for approval, fundraisers at Center and Waycross Middle and Work County Hospital.
Okay, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Ganis made the motion, Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Superintendent, number? We'll skip 19 and go to, we placed that down at the?
Yes, sir.
Superintendent, number 20?
Yes, recommend for approval, the summer work scheduled for 12-month employees.
I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All right, Coach Ganis made the motion, Mr. Tyre seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Nay. It passes. All right, Superintendent, item number 21?
Yes, recommend for approval, summer workers for transportation inmate.
All right. You heard the motion from Superintendent, or you heard the recommendation from Superintendent? That summer thing got me. You've heard the recommendation, Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. I mean, Ms. Waters, I can't even move. Ms. Waters made the motion, Coach Ganis made second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, recommend for approval, the personnel report in sub-items A, B, and C as presented.
Okay, heard the recommendation, Superintendent? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Mr. Ganis made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Well, we don't want to make it official. We don't bring out the basketball coach. And I was a personnel reporter, just to prove it. So I want to present Mr. Lenny Williams, or Coach Lenny Williams. He's our new head basketball coach at Work County High School, and that boat just solidified his.
Coach, you want to say something real quick? I mean, quick, you got 30 seconds. Thanks a lot. The process has been awesome. Coach Collins and not McKellough have done a great job. It's bittersweet leaving, but I'm welcome. You know, the last two years I've been traveling back and forth, two-way across. Now I get to officially make it home and close on my house finally next week. So get ready for big things. Big positive things.
All right.
Thank you, Coach. All right, number 23, Mr.?
Yeah, we can go and do that.
I want to go ahead and do this and we'll come back. The Work County School Systems express sympathy to the following. Melissa Herring, bookkeeper at Ware Middle, and the loss of her father Roland Walmatt. Kimberly Brown, special ed coordinator at Ware Middle, and the loss of her mother Pamela Thompson. Gloria Douglas, bus driver, and the loss of her mother Marion Lloyd Music. Gina Bryson, administrative assistant at Wake County Elementary and Memorial Drive, and the loss of her mother-in-law Grace Basden. Heather Thomas, teacher at Wesworth Elementary, and the loss of her aunt Reba Cruz Rush. Tiffany Crawford, paraprof at Ruskin Elementary, and the loss of her grandmother Jeanette Hyder. Misty Thrift, teacher at Ware Middle, and the loss of her mother Sharon Thrift. Family and friends of Rosetta Diana Hill, former teacher at Alice Street School. The family and friends of Madeline Joyner, former bookkeeper for the Work County Board of Education. And the family and friends of Arlene Larcey, former bus monitor for the Work County Board of Education. Our sympathies go out to all the, our employees or retired employees that have passed. Our thoughts and prayers are with y'all. Okay, at this time, I need a motion for us to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Any one of the three there? Ms. Waters made the second.
Motion for personnel.
Personnel, yes. All right, it's for personnel. Always has the list there. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We'll go back to this room.
We're going to stream right now, Ms. That's the last thing. Okay, okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll come right here.